Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, I'm gonna bring this meeting in. And just to repeat that this meeting, the purpose of this special meeting is to conduct a site visit to Islander Middle School, to meet with staff, students, and parents, to conduct a study session, and to conduct agency business, including final action on a proposed student field trip to France. And we have conducted our site visit and met with parents and students and educators. And now we are up to four, our action item here is Board Policy 1800 OE9: Communication and Support to the Board, Mercer Island High School/Islander Middle School French Program International Field Trip. And we are hearing from a French teacher.
So we have Ms. Altaviter here, who's going to present the trip that she's been working diligently on, that you'll be voting on, because it is an international trip, it requires board approval.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm the French teacher here at the middle school. I teach seventh grade and eighth grade French, so I'm very fortunate in that regard that I get to work with my students for almost two years. And the group that I'm having right now has been fantastic, and they really inspired me to like take the step and plan a trip to France for them. So I'm gonna tell you all about the trip. This is the company that has been working with me closely on organizing all the logistics for whom these are the founders that you see on the top, Sebastian Stalistas and Xavier, childhood friends from Paris. And they founded this company in 1992. They have offices in Montreal, Malaga, San Diego, and Paris. And then at the bottom picture you see Alexi Hernandez, he's the program advisor, who's been putting together the itinerary with me, and communication has been really great. He really wants to make this trip happen for our students, and he's been, yeah, great putting this together. Why do I want to travel with my students? I want them to have real-life situations where they can practice their language skills, learn about French culture, make new connections, grow in their independence, they're gonna create lasting memories, and then I always see an increase in language fluency and motivation also in the classroom. This is what the trip is supposed to look like. So Mercer Island, so IMS and high school students, it's tailored towards eighth grade and ninth grade students, of course, French students would be traveling from April 12th through the 22nd next year, 11 days. They would stay in a hostel in the Mediterranean town of Montpellier. And breakfast and dinner would be provided in the hostel. And they would be attending school for two days at the Collège de l'Assomption, which is right in the city center of Montpellier. And they are gonna be in a court treat because school in France goes till 5:00 PM, it's different. And I think that's part of the experience, to learn that things are different over there, come back with that knowledge, and also have like new appreciation for the things that they have here. They would be able to interact with their French team partners, and they would also go on trips to explore cities around Montpellier like Avignon and Nîmes. On the 19th, I would like to take them to Paris via TGV, a high-speed train, explore the city with a local tour guide. We would be staying in a hotel with three to four students per room. Breakfast would be provided in the hotel, we would have dinner in local restaurants. And some of the highlights of the trip include the Arc de Triomphe, La Tour Eiffel, Notre Dame, Mon Matrice, Sacre Coeur, et les Merciers Dorcés. So the goal of the trip here to Paris would be to have them learn appreciation for the French architecture, art, and history. And if you're wondering about like, what's this picture there, who are these people? That's me and my sister. In 1997, she took me on my very first trip to Paris. And for me, it was like a dream come true. We did take this selfie to commemorate the trip. She made it possible for me, I'm sure my parents paid for it. But I just wanna be that person for my students, taking them on that adventure together. And then if you are a Ted Lasso fan, like Mary Jo, she has a habit of showing Ted Lasso videos during our staff meetings, and she totally got me poked. Then you might remember the scene where Ted Lasso spits bubbly water into Rebecca Walton's face because he didn't expect the bubbles. And she reacted saying like, there's no greater education than travel. And that's pretty much it. If you want, I can walk you through the itinerary of the day-to-day things that we would be doing. Or we can go to questions, yes?
None about the itinerary, but just, and I assume that this is probably well underway, but can you talk a little bit about the funding model and scholarship opportunities for students?
Yeah, so the financial responsibility is on the parents, they will be paying for the trip. The trip costs $4,100 per student for, assuming 18 students are going to participate. And I have put in for grant application to be able to provide some scholarships.
How many students do you serve?
Eighteen. Yes.
If it's oversubscribed, is it first come, first served, or how?
We could take more students, I just need a third chapron if we go over 20.
I was so interested about the chapters, so who will be going with the?
Me and Mr. Collins, who is our social studies teacher.
And have you had, how much students have you had so far?
My eighth grade class is very interested. I haven't talked to the parents yet because I need your approval for that.
Now, let's just be real, it's a lot of money, and they're young. Talk to me about why now, and why, just, just, I mean, I heard your whys, I appreciate your whys. I'm just, you just don't hear, at least around here, programs this young for just students. Not that I would stand in the way, I just don't, like, if I heard about this as a parent, I'd be like, eh, not gonna cut it, I mean, in terms of that.
Okay.
It's just, just, financially, it's just, it's a big ask. I guess, I guess, talk to me about that, talk to me about that.
Yeah, and in the end, of course, it's every parent's decision if they wanna send their kid or not. And I am aware that it's a big financial commitment. Why at that age? I think it is a great age to send them to France because they have already learned a lot. I have these students for two years before I sent them to the high school. I know most of the ninth graders at the high school, and they are learning fast. And sparking their interest with something like this from the beginning on is going to make them, and it's already happening in my classroom, because I talk to my students about the trip, and they are doing their best every day in French class, because now they know, oh, I will actually get to speak to somebody in France and practice this. It takes everything from pretending, and we do a very good job in French class at pretending, like talking French to each other, but it takes everything from pretending to real-life practice. And I think starting earlier is better than later, because you have that motivation that's going to carry them through all the way up to French IV and AP level. Also, they can drink wine at age 16 in France, and I definitely didn't wanna get into that.
That's appreciated, yeah.
Can you explain a little bit?
Yeah.
I think I know the answer, I know the answer to this, but, so this is part of a, it's a two-way thing, correct?
It is, yeah.
So do you want to share?
Students from Montpellier are going to come visit in March, March 1st through the 12th. And our families are going to be hosting them, and they will also be coming to visit our schools and exploring the area here. So when our students go, they will already know the French students over there. And so far, at my former high school in Redondo Beach, I was teaching in Southern California before I came here, I've only been doing the hosting part because I couldn't take, like, students aboard because my own kids were really little. And just the hosting has been an amazing experience, because the students bring the language and the culture with them. And it's just really exciting for students to be able to interact with them and talk to like a real French person their own age. And usually, there's lots of tears when it's time to say goodbye, and they are gonna go back home, and this time, it's going to be like, well, you can go and see them in Montpellier, visit them there, see what their school is like.
We have a digital raise hand from Maggie.
Hi, this sounds like an amazing opportunity for the families that are able to do it. My question for you is, other than, other than in the, in the classroom time, like the time that they're attending school there, is there any way that you plan to encourage the students to use their French, like, when they're out and about, like, in restaurants and so forth? Because I know, having taken my own daughter, who had done more than a year of Duolingo French, Duolingo French, having taken her to France and had her speak zero words of French to any actual French people, kind of like how hard it is to get kids to take that step, especially if they're surrounded by English speakers?
Right, I totally see that challenge. I have a lead teacher at the school in Montpellier who's very engaged in trying to do everything to make this amazing experience for our students. She's gonna have planned activities, work with her students together, she's hoping to get release for her students for at least one of the trips to the other cities. We are planning to do activities with them together, go out to restaurants with them together. She's planning a whole event at her school, something with like Oscar nominations, I think they've done this before. They are very much used to hosting students from different countries, like, right now, there's German students there. So they know how to do this, how to make the students interact, and we, we will find ways to make them talk French. If I can do it in my classroom, I can do it there.
We have ways of making you talk, thank you very much.
Yeah, it sounds like an amazing opportunity. I think particularly in our community, the French-American school, like building on an already very strong French program, and also this French-speaking student population, it'd be something that, like, down the line, like, maybe attracts students from the French-American school to, to our school system.
Yeah.
I know that, at least, like, sort of the reputations, if you go all the way through French in the high school, you will speak French, which is unusual in the American system.
It is, yeah.
So I think that is a huge kudos to you and the department.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, fully supported.
I know Madame Beatre gets a lot of very positive feedback from her students completing the French program all the way through. And it does start here, in seventh grade. Yes.
I mean, just to like preface this, I did a high school exchange both ways, was doing receiving, did my junior year abroad in a college in France, and then taught English in France after school, so like, you know, and was a French major, so you know, I'm all in on the French. I guess my only concern, and you've addressed it somewhat, but I'm just gonna urge us to really think about it hard, is the economic equity aspect of it all, and financial burden, or financial limitations of some families from attending. I know, for instance, the band trip to Europe that the scholarship asked was much higher percentage than it was for the band trip to New York a few years prior, and I just wanna make sure that we're not baiting a two-tier system where some students are able to participate in these fantastic programs, and some are not, as the real high school experience.
Yeah, I am 100% with you, I've thought about all these things, I tried to put in a grant application for a lot of money. When I met with Ms. Burgess, she said like, this is like almost 100% of what our whole school is going to have, you have to lower this. So I lowered it. There's a sign-up line for the trip, when parents have to sign up, do the first payment, and when they have to do the final payment. If there's any ways of, like, the community parents can get involved raising more money in that, within that timeline, I wanna take every student who wants to participate, and I don't wanna leave anyone here due to finances. I feel so far I've done everything that I can from my end. I might need some help and support to raise more money, if there's still a time to do that.
I have another question, so I am an echo all coming so far. I am also one of the parents who will love the kids who have that experience, but I am also a very apprehensive parent in terms of the security of my child, especially my daughter. So I'm curious about, well, like, what pathways you have looked around to ensure the safety of the kids, and if you have, with the company, like, how do you ensure that the kids will be safe? I know that you have the two chaproms, and I, but I, what I get is that you're having a hotel on the hosted comparison, the experience over here, that they are not staying at home a different way.
Right.
So what other pathways, or how, what have you ensured for the safety of the kids when they travel? I don't know, does it make sense?
I do get the point that the safety of the students is a primary concern, I'm a mom as well, of course, but I don't know what are you thinking of, what am I supposed to do? I can't go for a weekend to Avignon and look around there, it's not like I'm taking them somewhere close.
No, no, I'm not saying, in that sense, like, it's in the sense of doing the research of, why did you choose that company, like, in this, this school where they're staying, like, how, why, how do you communicate to ensure that, that when they interact with other kids and other adults, they're more safe?
Yeah.
And that's a question that many, many parents might also need that to.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I do trust in the company, they have 30 years of experience, communication has been great, and now they never had any major issues in their time practicing this, making trips possible for the students. I have been working very closely with Marie Pélissot, who is the lead teacher at the school, and I have full trust in her, she's an amazing educator, she knows her families, she knows her students, she knows the area really well, so it's not like I'm going to be there by myself, but I can rely on her as a resource, pointing to things that might be a little too tricky, where I have to watch out for student safety, just like I'm going to do when she brings her students here too. I don't know if you have anything else in mind, what I should be doing, if I answered your question fully?
Some of it, and I think that, that is some of what I want to, it's.
Okay, yeah.
As part, just as a reminder, built into the overnight policy are all kinds of check-in, check-out, and responsibilities to shop rooms, so there's a bunch of that stuff built into just the overnight nature of the trip to begin with. So in the hotel, what are the responsibilities? So there's, there are some of those things that we put into place too.
Yeah, part of it is a, like, parent-student-teacher agreement, that the students have to follow rules, the parents and the students have to sign this, and they do sign that if the students don't follow the rules, and if they get caught with drugs in their possession, they will be sent home on the parents' expense. So that's an agreement that we have, that's in place for international field trips, that they will have to sign.
Erin's been working on the backend a lot with, with Ms. Altaviter there too, in terms of risk management.
Yeah, and I, I think this trip will, because it'll be a district-sponsored trip, it will have to comply with all our policies for all our international trips, so the same thing that VAM's having to do when they go to London, the trips that we've had in other places, we have the client ratios, but then we have the additional sort of layer where the, this company is well-vetted and insured, and they have established, like, places they're going, so it's actually probably, because it's not a one-off, they've, they've done this before, so there's experience, so that probably helps with oversight, but we already, we also have our ratios met in our process and procedures, so it's like dual layer, if that makes sense. So I actually, I have fair amount of confidence with respect to the safety and security, because we're putting in all the measures we would typically do for a trip, plus there's another layer. And then we've, as I understand, an additional supervision just through the other schools, and the, the school, the partner school.
Can I ask what our district admin and school admin think?
Yeah, I, do you wanna speak on that first with, with the middle school, and then we'll talk about what we've had conversations on.
Yeah, Christina and I, really, she broached this with me last spring, and I thought it was a great idea, and then when the French-American school really started moving, we got more and more interest from advanced French speakers, and then I worked with Ian and with Fred to think about an advanced French morning program, and I think this makes sense with where our district is going, and, and what parents are wanting in regards to our French program. And I also am biased, because I did a exchange as well when I was in high school, and just the experience is invaluable. And I think from talking with our students secretly on the down-low about this, they are very excited, and so is parent interest, so at the school level, we're fully supporting.
Erin, did you wanna add?
Nope.
Yeah, I mean, we, the first conversation started in June, and I think Nova and I were first connecting through and said, yes, let's look into that for sure, and because of the diligence that I've seen from the school team, mostly Ms. Altaviter there, I, I think it would be a great thing to, to send out, I think that we're going to a country that has a nexus to us already, given some island partnerships that we've always seen over time, and, you know, the more opportunities we can give our kids to, to go abroad, we will certainly be thinking on the financial end on that. We have different ways that we try to mitigate against all of that, whether or not that's band, orchestra, a language, or wherever they're going. So I see this based on all that she's gone through, all the steps, as a really great opportunity, and it might open the door to future opportunities, not just in French.
So do, I, we do a motion. Okay, so anybody motion to approve the international travel by the French-American?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, students.
Aye.
Word?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so 2050, and we're.
Thank you.
Maggie, you'll teach those French kids.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's about to start. I have to go. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we're gonna go and move on to Board Policy 1800 OE9: Communication and Support in the Board. This is the Strategies 360 Results from the Post-Bond Community Survey. As we know, that survey went out to various members of our community, and at least one board member, I believe, was randomly chosen to talk about the experience with the bond.
So I'm gonna bring our partners from Strategies 360 up. Do you wanna project using one of your devices, or do you want me to project?
We can plug it in.
Although it looks like it's a laptop. Oh, here it is. Yeah, no, we're, I just didn't see your laptop.
Yeah.
All right, so our partners David and Rachel are back, appreciate you making time for us. Now that they've had their opportunity to speak with the community and gather the feedback, this is really a high-level opportunity for you as a board, and then for community who are gonna watch as well, of what did we learn, what did they find, and then some strategic recommendations that we might use as we start thinking forward, obviously in terms of bonds and levies, and overall just district direction. So I'll turn it over to Ricky, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Everyone, thank you again for having us, I'm Rachel Naknishi, I'm the Vice President of Education at Strategies 360. I support school districts in creating research-based strategic communications and outreach plans, so excited to share this research and help the district think forward about planning communications and outreach for the next year, thinking about a potential funding measure in the future.
And my name is David, I'm Senior Vice President of Research at Strategies 360, have been conducting public research for a little bit over 15 years now. And what we'll be discussing here today is a representative survey of all adult residents in Mercer Island School District. I'll emphasize, everything you're seeing is of adults age 18-plus, this is not of voters, it is of adults that are residents in the school district. Interviews were collected in the middle of September, 400 of them, and those 400 interviews, if I skip ahead a couple of slides, are representative based on demographics from the US Census's American Community Survey, so based on gender, age, educational attainment, geographic regions, which we collaborated with the school district to use, I believe, elementary school regions, race and ethnicity, self-identification, and then also household income. We use a trusted data provider, in this case, it's L2 Incorporated, which is who we used before for the demographic analysis, and make sure that that enriched data file, which we use for contact, all of the interviews, the 400 as a total, fit within the parameters of this US Census data, so that looking at all of the interviews together, they're representative of the school district.
Just quickly, you'll see it in math, but just think quickly, West Mercer, or excuse me, North, yeah.
And these are the elementary school boundaries?
They are, so if you remember, that West Mercer goes down into the downtown area, Northwood, Captry here, and it does wrap around like that Midian Island Park.
Nice, a quick question. Sorry, is this done by population, or is this done by school boundary? The, the northeast, northwest, like, such like?
Elementary school boundaries, alright.
Okay, okay, thanks, just, I had made a mistake.
And then the last thing that I'll just mention is, viewed as a total, there'll be some breakdown of, what is it, the data by parents, guardians, or relatives of students versus not, but the data as a whole carries a margin of error of plus or minus five percentage points at a 95% confidence interval, meaning that if we were to tell you that 57% of adults within the school district believes the school district needs additional funding, that percentage holding that opinion that the district needs additional funding, and the true population could be anywhere from 52% up to 62%, that's basically the trade-off, because it would be both time and resource prohibitive to try and go out and interview 1,000, 2,000, half of the actual population of the district. So with those caveats on what we're looking at, let's actually get into the results, which largely are very positive. Residents are overwhelmingly satisfied with the quality of education that students receive in the district. Almost four out of five residents express that they're satisfied, including almost 40% saying that they're very satisfied, only 16% of residents saying that they're dissatisfied. These are numbers that are, I'm confident to say, much better than not only the average school district in Washington, but even King County. Anything else you wanna add?
Congratulations.
Question, I sort of down in the footnote for the prompt, so is that, when it says rotate, is that 50/50?
Yeah, so to reduce any type of sequence bias, answer options on almost all questions are not always read in a certain direction, like you indicated, yeah, they're rotated 50/50, so half the people would hear, like, are you dissatisfied or satisfied, and half the people would hear, are you satisfied or dissatisfied? And yes, all the answer texts are to the question prompt text is gonna be at the bottom of these slides. So we then ask opinions towards the actual school board, majority of residents are holding favorable views towards the school board, compared to only 32% are holding unfavorable views, with then another 8% saying that they're neutral, and 7% saying that they either have no opinion or have never heard of the school board, which is actually lower than I expected, but again, overall positive information. So we then continue to drill down, getting more and more specific on purpose. With this also is giving us positive news, which is on almost every metric, specific metric that we ask residents, their opinions and perceptions towards how the school district is doing. The school district receives very high percentages of residents saying that the district's doing excellent or good job. The school district receives very high percentages of residents saying that the district's doing excellent or good job, including overall performance of public schools, maintaining buildings, keeping students safe, preparing students for competitive four-year universities, supporting students' mental health and social emotional learning. All of those have anywhere from roughly sixty percent upwards to seventy-five percent of residents saying the school district is doing an excellent or good job. Now, the two areas that we view as areas for growth or improvement, even those two, which are communicating with the community and getting informed and transparency around how the school district spends taxpayer dollars, both of those start out as of right now with roughly half of residents saying the district is doing an excellent or good job. We will have recommendations and specific questions about how to grow that percentage up to something higher. But it is very uncommon that we see data like this, to be very clear with other school districts. This is well above the, for the quote-unquote, like most, needs most improvement metrics to still start out at fifty percent of residents saying you're doing excellent or good job is much better than almost anything else you're seeing. And then this is those questions only amongst parents, guardians and relatives of students enrolled in the school district. Slightly higher, which is what we normally expect to see, rates of saying excellent or good. You can see the difference in percentage points on the far right-hand side.
Can you define for, for this one, is that current parents or current and former?
Uh.
Well, I.
Current.
Current.
Yeah, I think we say, do you currently have a student in mind?
Um, so we then ask what the closest to basically a focus group that could be conducted within a survey, which is an open-ended or qualitative question. We ask a question prompt and then allow the survey respondents to answer, because this is being taken either with a live interviewer or online, either transcribed, typed in or over the phone. And the prompt which we asked them was, what actions or information would increase your trust in the Mercer Island School District? The advantages, they can answer any way they want. The disadvantages, sometimes they either opt out, as you can see at the bottom where it says can't think of any, don't know, no opinion, or they're just incredibly vague. But after the fact, we do categorize this information. And the most common responses that we received are better communication and transparency in a general sense, again, connected to what the specific metric with the most need for improvement is. More transparency specifically in regards to events and updates. More transparency with specific mentions of the allegations of teacher misconduct, more transparency around budget and spending, and improved education student outcomes. All of those were roughly about ten percent or more of responses mentioned them. You can see other things which you may hear a lot about on social media or may have very loud voices mentioning are pieces of substance which were much less common. But again, keeping in mind that there's six percent of residents that say, I fully trust the school district and I have no concerns. And then about another twenty percent that either had somewhat incoherent responses or just completely opted out and said, I can't think of anything, I don't know. So transitioning into the questions which we specifically have and are phrased in a very specific way to be compliant with public disclosure commission. We ask residents whether they believe the school district needs additional funding, has sufficient funding or has too much funding. Starting out before any information is shared about components of a levy or a potential bond in the future or any messages, it starts out with fifty-seven percent of residents saying that they believe the school district needs additional funding. This is the example that I used of how the margin of error works, where this could be anywhere from fifty-two percent up to sixty-two percent, but that is a strong starting point. Even more positive is that after hearing more information, which I mentioned, that percentage or response rate grows to sixty-eight percent of residents saying that they need, they believe the school district needs additional funding.
What's the information that they hear?
We'll see that in subsequent slides, but it's basically asking residents their view of how much of priority different components of a bond or levy are, and then to respond to some more thematic related messages. But we'll, we'll go through all of that in the subsequent slides. So starting out with fifty-seven percent and then going up to sixty-eight percent is very positive and also demonstrates the value of a active public engagement and education outreach on a regular, normal interval, that there is that potential after sharing information for that percentage to grow up to sixty-eight percent. And this is a breakdown of different geographic regions and some other demographics. We can see that it's relatively consistent. There are no big dips or dives in terms of responses to these actual questions. Relatively consistent across geographic and demographic groups. We then also ask what we have come to see as a very vital question, which is a sense of tax, views on taxes in relation to the quality of local public services in the community. These numbers, again, are much, much better than we see either in the average school district in the state or even in King County. Forty-nine percent of residents saying they believe their property taxes are about right relative to the quality of public services in their community. When you add the additional eight percent believing their taxes are too low, you get fifty-seven percent. That is the group that we view as being open to additional funding, either at current levels or increased levels. Again, that's much, much better than we normally see. And the, on the other side, thirty-nine percent of residents saying their taxes are either a little too high or much too high in relation to the quality of public services.
Sorry. I just said, I mean, how do you pass a bond that needs sixty percent when thirty-nine percent of people out? How does law serve?
Uh, subsequent slides will let you know what the residents' priorities are, what they resonate with most in terms of that. So we first asked residents to rate each of the following levy components on a scale of top priority down to not a priority at all. Those were the answer options, again, rotated so to remove sequence bias. And levy components that are most related to students' daily lives received the highest rates, roughly about seventy-five percent of residents saying that that is a top or high priority. So that's one of our large takeaways, is that when discussing components of a levy, the more that the component is described or in actuality part of students' daily lives, the higher rate of residents respond saying that is a top or high priority. So the specific language was maintaining student programs such as elementary band, orchestra, and choir athletics at Island or Middle School, Mercer Island High School and, and Arden Elementary School. Seventy-seven percent of residents and eighty percent of parents of students said that was a top or high priority. Then the second highest, because this is ranked in the setting order, is improving teacher-to-student ratios in elementary classes and maintaining availability of a wide array of elective classes in middle and high school, with seventy-four percent and eighty-five percent saying that is a top or high priority. I would also point that phrase out, teacher-to-student ratio as key in that component, having the most, what we would call intensity, meaning that thirty-four percent saying that is a top priority for additional funding. Not to say that the other components we tested are unimportant. They're just not necessarily resonating with this high levels of residents as those top two. And the common thread that we take from that in terms of our analysis is that phrasing things in a student-centric way is very, very important.
To what extent, so amongst those categories, I think all are fairly self-explanatory except for the last one. Whereas, at least in my experience, most parents and probably like internally non-parents could not say what exactly a seven-period day enables. So to what extent, when one looks at seven-period day, do you think you can read into that versus that might just reflect a level, like, was there any additional information given of what a seven-period day enables?
And, and I, and I think that's a good point, which is if I were to compare the component with the highest percentage saying a priority versus the lowest percentage saying it's a top or high priority, that level of detail is very important because in a way, you could have both of those answers be about, or integrate a seven-period day. But maintaining student programs, the full answer prompt is maintaining student programs such as elementary band, orchestra, choir, athletics at Island Middle School and Mercer Island High School and Arden Elementary School. So very descriptive. As compared to the bottom, which is maintaining a seven-period day at Mercer Island High School as opposed to six periods funded by the state.
I would say that, at least my piece on that is, you, the electives are super important in the second one. And you can't have that without that seven-period day. So to me, those all, to someone who doesn't know as much, those, that tells me that if they knew more about that, it might be higher too, or that you can't untangle.
Yeah, I'm just worried that like the maintained seven-period day is like hard necessarily, you know, for someone to know.
Well, it requires requirements and the number of credits you need and the conflicts that, that many of your kids.
If you don't have one.
I, I see it always related to. I mean, I could get points. I wonder also if it's just a case with those numbers, just based on like my experience of my teasing group, yes, data. I wonder if like parents who aren't affected by special education needs in part don't have children in school right now are just sort of like, eh, I don't have a top priority for me because it's not, hasn't come up. Or you know, like that kind of thing, like the, where maybe once their kid gets to high school, they would respond differently if it's a high school only specific question. I'm, I'm sure there's no way to tease that out, but like.
Yeah.
But I think that, that my, my instinct is telling me that that's one of the reasons that these rate also a little lower. It's maybe a lack of understanding of how those electives that we value so much will fit into a six-period day if that's not a top priority. And also just the, you know, if you're not, if you're not a parent with child, you're very social education focused, like that you would not necessarily prioritize it as highly as someone who has a child.
But it is still quite high.
It's quite high, that side.
Quite high.
And, and I do, I don't want to go back to show the graph and kind of lose our progress, but I do want to remind you all that of residents and their answers, forty-seven percent identify as a parent, relative, or guardian of a child in Mercer Island School District. So that on the far right-hand side is forty-seven percent of residents, whereas another forty-five percent of residents say, no, I do not have a child of school age. So part of these recommendations is how to appeal to the broadest swath of residents, keeping in mind that almost half of them do not have a child of school age at all. And the more detail that can be provided in some of these better performing components is a key part of that, especially having that detail centered around student performance and success and with a level that is more about students and less about systems or programs. So for all of these, because we'll look at components of a prospective potential bond in a moment, we tested both in this manner where the survey respondents rate each individual component. And then to have certainty as much as we can, we tested in a different manner where they're only allowed to pick one component. So rather than rate each of these, we say, if you could only pick one, what would be your top priority for school funding? And improving teacher-to-student ratio rises to the top. And so viewing the two different ways of asking this question, both with the individual ratings of each component and only selecting one, allows us to really recommend that phrase, teacher-to-student ratios, and just generally be more descriptive, centering things in its description around student performance and student experience. And you can see a connection between the highest rate of residents saying top part, which is thirty-four percent, saying teacher-to-student ratios and electives, and then forty-eight percent of residents saying improving teacher-to-student ratios and maintaining electives would be my one choice if I could only pick one. And that's true whether we're looking at residents who are parents, guardians or relatives of students or residents who do not have students in the school district. That is still top, almost both of those groups, which is a nice consistency. Um, things are not quite as clear-cut when it comes to the components we tested related to a bond. But generally, our takeaway here is that safety, security and ADA upgrades, which was phrased as making safety, security and ADA upgrades to secure school campuses and improve accessibility. That was a full description. That was found sixty-two percent of residents saying that's a top or high priority and similarly sixty-five percent of residents who are parents of students. All other components were much lower, especially the using sustainable school materials, which with full description was ensuring our schools are sustainable using timber instead of steel, implementing stormwater management and solar-ready paneling, and then replacing one of the three older elementary schools with a newer constructed school. Both of those received much lower levels of residents saying it was a top or high priority. But to be honest, even the forty-seven percent is not necessarily great either. So again, generally, the more we can make it about students and student safety with making safety, security and ADA upgrades to secure school campuses and prove accessibility, that's, that's what the recommendation is here. We similarly asked this content, rather than selecting individually rating each, we asked them to only select one. And these three, once again, came up to the top, not as, quite as clear-cut is with the levy components, but safety, security and ADA upgrades is a top recommendation. And secondarily, completing construction of the middle school and modernizing buildings, including HVAC systems.
So is it, so is your focus really just the messaging? Because to me, replacing an older elementary school, you, you would do it because to improve the safety, security and ADA, and then, and it would modernize the systems. Like you can't, you can't do those, I mean.
It's a great segue to our next.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this is a little bit more about, so far, when we say after hearing more information, it's been about the components themselves. And there is some ability to kind of transform things and mix things together. But we are specifically breaking things into multiple pieces to see like, okay, what are strengths and weaknesses? So in the next section, which is very informative for Rachel and her team's work, is more the descriptive thematic section where we test the following messages and see how residents respond to them. Give you a moment to read through this. And then assuming we're getting close to the bottom, I'm going to go ahead and read the rigorous academics message because that actually was one of the best testing along with cuts. All students learn at different speeds and need individualized attention. The most efficient learners need extra challenge to maximize their potential and prepare for a fulfilling future. Our school's learning environments must appropriately challenge students with rigorous academics so they have every opportunity to grow and thrive. So this is informing what would be the public education, public engagement campaign from a more universal theme perspective. Pairing with that, we're generally recommending, without funding, the district will need to make cuts to staffing and programs like. make cuts to staffing and programs like special education, athletics, performing arts, and nurses. Asked to rate each of these messages individually, the highest levels of residents said that the rigorous message, rigorous academics, and the cuts message, eighty-two percent of residents, seventy-four percent of residents, saying that each of those messages was either very or somewhat convincing reason to support more funding, increased funding for Mercer Island School District. And so this is the two parts of information, individual components of a bond or levy, which are much more cut and dry factual, and then the, what would be a more universal theme for public communication of these different approaches. Keeping in mind, none of them are necessarily unpopular, but our job in part is to help you all by with the recommendation of what the best and strongest approach would be. We can see consistency whether this data is broken down by parents or non-parents. The reason these percentages are over a hundred percent is because we're doubling the very convincing percentage in order to give that more weight. And the point, though, is we want to see if there's difference between these two groups, and there isn't. It's the number-one message for all residents, the number-two messages are the same, whether we then narrow that down to parents or non-parents. And then the last question before I hand it over to Rachel to talk about different communication modes and approaches, we asked a more open-ended type of question where the answer options were pre-selected, but we said, if you wanted to find out more information about a funding measure, which of the following would you be most interested in finding out about? And thirty-four percent of residents selected a detailed breakdown of how funding would be used in each school, and twenty-eight percent of residents selected a clear explanation of tax implications for residents. Our takeaway, which we usually see these options at the top, ranked in a descending order, is that residents want to feel a degree of being included in the decision-making process and what the details are and how and why funding will be used. They need some detailed justification, which is completely achievable in the example of clear explanation of, clear explanation of tax implications for residents we have seen before, school districts communicate for like average resident A, average resident B, this is what the impact will be, and it gives a sense of reassurance of being included to a degree in the decision-making process. And with that, we're going to switch over to how residents actually look for information about news and events in the school district.
Great, so it's important for us to know what information people are looking for, but it's also important to know where they're getting that information. So we asked folks with a pre-populated list where they get information about the school district, and by far and away, the top choices are not district-owned channels. So folks aren't necessarily looking at the district website, the district Facebook, they're asking their neighbor in the grocery store, or at some kind of community meeting. And so it's really important to think about what are some other ways to get the district's information to some of those places. And so here you can see, again, even among parents, their top sort of news channel is their friends and neighbors. And then, sort of high up above, it's communication from the district and schools, and then you can see, you know, some of the school-specific outreach channels are reaching parents, which is, which is good to see. And then, but, you know, thinking about ways to reach those non-parents, which is about half of the community.
Certain options are higher levels among the non-parents, such as local television and radio, but still the top two or three are the same, which is a friend or neighbor, newspapers, local newspapers, and then mailed community newsletters and annual reports. So there, there's some consistency, but again, we, we like to show this broken out to remind school district clients that these groups are roughly the same sizes, and so there may be different methods that need to be in mind to ensure that non-parents, basically those who don't have school-aged children, and then to a much smaller degree, those who do, but they're not in the school district. But far and away, the number-one and number-two methods are the same.
And I think it's also important to note that people are looking in different places, right? So having that sort of multi-channel strategy is, is important to continue. People more than ever are comparing what they hear from the district with what their friend says, with what the news says, so making sure that there's coverage of information across all of those different channels is important.
Question, is newspapers like the Mercer Island Reporter, is that high relative to other communities? I mean, for everyone who says the death of newspapers, that seems like, I mean, the most significant, right? Like communication channel.
It's relatively high, yeah. It's, yeah.
Many communities don't have a newspaper that's the same name as their school district, and so I think that is higher, and I think because this is sort of a more tight-knit community, and likely, many folks' friends and neighbors are contributing to the newspaper, so it's sort of that crossover.
But definitely, we usually try and emphasize that a balance needs to be remembered in terms of both channels and methods of communication the district manage and owns and ones they don't, and then also traditional methods and, or excuse me, traditional types of media and newer media like social media, which is a segue to the next slide. So for anybody that selected social media on this question, we had a follow-up, so it's slightly smaller, it's only one hundred and forty-one respondents, but they actually were able to select their exact method.
Yeah, so I think we have seen from all of our research, people of all ages are using Facebook and getting information there, whether it's factual or not. And then, you know, closely followed by Nextdoor, and I know, you know, in the school district communications world, we've all heard of some Nextdoor group where people are saying XYZ, and so we're not recommending necessarily that the district starts a new account or starts engaging with some of those places, but making sure that there's, you know, someone who can see what folks are saying, or someone who can engage in those conversations. And again, I think, you know, another main takeaway is it's not just the superintendent's job, but really, everyone in the district should be a messenger on behalf of what is happening in the district and knows how to answer questions.
I just had a question on Facebook, did you break it down into regular Facebook-like people posting or private groups? Because there's a lot of private.
We, we just had Facebook, okay, was, was the option.
But the previous slide does have.
Between Facebook account, or profiles or accounts that are managed by the school district here in the middle, on their social media, meaning, meaning not managed by the school district.
Yeah, I just meant the other social media like Facebook on Mercer Island, there's a lot of different private Facebook groups that we don't have access to.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't want to list out all of those groups and ask, but a significant amount of folks are on some other kind of group.
And so, I'll let you go.
So really, you know, here's your sort of action plan to move forward with the strategic communications. I think the main thing, you know, it, a reminder that satisfaction with the quality of education is very high, and so that is something to be proud about. Your reputation is very strong amongst your community. Again, prioritizing and speaking about projects that, in a way that makes the connection clear of how those components benefit students. So it doesn't mean don't replace your HVAC when you need to, but, you know, folks need to understand the benefit and sort of the ROI of their tax investments. Folks are getting their information not from the district, and so thinking about, you know, an outreach strategy, empowering community groups or PTSAs to make sure that they, you know, can share information or have access to get information. And then, you know, some of the components require more time to explain, like the seven-period day, and so that's, you know, a little bit different format than, you know, it just thinks that, think about different ways where you can take the time to make those explanations and make that connection super, super clear. And then, you know, one thing that we're really seeing is the information, particularly around bonds and levies, needs to almost be explained super specifically, super detailed, but also easy to understand in, you know, our five-second attention span. So sort of identifying a challenge and then identifying how the project is going to address that challenge.
Positive outcomes for students is one clear through line we see in a lot. The more that residents can understand the investment or the ROI that Rachel mentioned and how that will lead to positive student outcomes in the future, the better and more effective the communication is. The more of a sense of being included by sharing details of the impact of taxes on the average household, the more effective the communication will be. And then just to bring it up to the top, the school district is a very strong position already in terms of satisfaction with the quality of education, in terms of use towards the school, the school board, and so the question is really more how to grow it somewhat. But just keep in mind, the residents are very satisfied. We almost never see data like this, so you should all, you know, start out from that position.
The other sort of recommendation.
This is how the district.
Recommendation or reminder is similar to how students need to hear something seven times, so do adults, especially when they don't know they're learning something and we're just, you know, constantly have a flow of content and information at us. So thinking about how to talk about levy and bond projects throughout the year and not just, you know, in a couple of months before an election. So folks already have that baseline understanding.
Any questions? Questions?
This isn't really a question, it's more of an observation, and I, I think it's just a really interesting, you know, for the, the strategic people, well, all of us, but also the strategic people, it's what, what I'm going back, I, I just, in all, I happen to be one of the randoms who was called, so I participated, yeah. I didn't say I was a school board member because it didn't ask me that, but I, but I, it's really interesting to see that, like, the older generation, I assume mostly older with kids either out of the district or don't, you know, don't have kids in the district, is going back to kind, not old-school education principles, but, you know, my age education, like in terms of student ratio, student-staff ratio, that was the big messaging when I was a student, and then, you know, before I became a parent. And so that's, but, but keeping in mind that that's the, that's the population that we're really trying to reach out to, so we don't want to necessarily be like this new-age, you know, education lingo, like, maybe we want to stay away from that. I mean, that's just, that, that's what I kept going back to when I was seeing some of that. It's not a bad thing, it's just reframing it in today's education model in terms of all we heard about, and we didn't have a six, I mean, I grew up here, we had a six-period day and I was in band, I never got to take electives. So it's like, you know, the old school, those older, you know, elders in the communities now, or, you know, I was fine, I got to where I wanted to go, but, but really looking at as an, as a student outcome and an opportunity that, that, this has been very enlightening for me, at least, in terms of like new ways of looking at things and messaging.
Yeah, I think the other context is just the national conversation about education is not, doesn't highlight good things happening. It's very easy to tell a bad story or, you know, sort of harp on one bad thing that's happening. And so I think that's what people are hearing a lot of in all different spaces, and so, you know, figuring out how to sort of break through that noise with the good stories.
I do have a question. I don't want to take up all the time, but I do have a question, and I'm curious if you guys have done, I don't want to go spend, this was really valuable, and I, I was questioning the value of it, you know, but willing to go with the flow and learn something, but, but I really feel it now, the value of it, so thank you for that, and people who know a whole lot more than I do. The, as a way to bridge the gap of like the yesteryears mindset of what education is versus the current, and then like the recent, so the recent grads, college kids, and then young, young professionals, in terms of getting their answers on these things to educate our older community, like this is how our young people are viewing their education. Have you guys had experience kind of reaching out to recent grads, college kids in the, that went through the system? Am I being clear?
As part of a poll.
Either, either whether or not our district goes and does it on our own, or engages a firm like yours to reach out to our students who graduated in the teens and twenties?
We haven't, just because we've, getting that sort of confirmed list of contact information would be pretty difficult for an outside firm, so we haven't targeted that sort of group specifically for any district. But in all of our research, we do have sort of the age breakout, which would be the closest proxy. And then we also just completed a statewide survey for Piper Sandler, so they have some of that statewide information as well.
Because in, in part, there's certain, what is it, there's certain restrictions, so we have to abide by working for taxpayer-funded agencies, such as yourselves, through the Public Disclosure Commission. So almost everything that we do is a broad-based informational educational approach, and I think a lot of what we focus on is a bit more making sure that the areas and ways districts are communicating reach residents who do not have school, do not have students because the man, the communication channels you're already communicating through that you manage are largely reaching a good portion of the thirty-five, forty-nine-year-olds because they're much more likely to have kids. And the more difficult thing is making sure you're communicating, again broadly, but in areas that are reaching people who do not have school-aged children, who still are making decisions, is still part of the community, but are less likely to be receiving communication through school channels, whether social media, print, email, anything like that.
For me, that the, I thought this was extraordinarily valuable, and that was one of the key components for the communication path, and how are we changing the various, the two, if you would say, like the two aspects of our community. Because we have children in schools and we're so involved with schools, it's very easy to sort of forget that half of our community is not involved with schools in almost any way at this point in their lives. And I really appreciated the way that you teased out the community priorities, and for them, and a number of ways that we could, you could really understand both what the community prioritizes and how that might differ from like the priorities that we had sort of assumed or, or had ourselves, and then also how to potentially address those priorities. So I think this was an extraordinarily viable exercise, and I think the takeaways are extremely interesting. Fingers crossed.
Thank you for being a great part. And for you. We'll need to close out the meeting officially.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move?
Yes. Do we put them in, or do we use them to tease out? Students? Board members?
Hi.
Two, zero, five, zero. Oh, oh, sorry, negative.
No, I, I said I.
Two, zero, five, zero, I was just assuming. All right, we're adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, ma.